Well, allowing us to reschedule your. This meeting of the Walton Hills Zoning Board of Appeals will come to order. Today is Wednesday, September the 30th, and it is 6:04 PM. Because of the COVID-19 legislation modifying our meetings for the state of Ohio, Governor DeWine signed a bill, amending House Bill 197, which relates to public meetings and hearings during the COVID-19 pandemic. The enactment provides that during this period, members of public bodies may hold and attend meetings and conduct hearings by means of teleconference, which we are doing a video conference right now, or other similar electronic technology, and the maximum allowed attendance is 10 people. I don't think we've exceeded that in any of our hearings. So, and if there's any letters or any communication from the residents or businesses of this meeting that are going to be on YouTube, they'll be communicating to the gentleman, and he'll allow them to get responses from us, okay? So, the hearings for Dale Hanks, resident of 7455 Walton Road in Walton Hills. Dale is asking for a variance to construct, as it is on our documentation, an accessory building, and stating on his application that he is appealing a carport. At any event, we are discussing the village's codified ordinance 126604 subsection 4 subsection 1B, corner side setback in the Country Home District. And we may be referring to another village codified ordinance during this hearing, which I believe is 660 dot 70 during this hearing. Mr. Hanks, we do not have a full board presently. One of our members has retired within the last week or so. Do you wish that we proceed with the hearing without one member?
Please.
Mr. Secretary, would you please review the data for this hearing?
This hearing pertains to the appeal of Dale Hanks, 7455 Walton Road, Walton Hills, Ohio. The village of Walton Hills received a building permit application dated 7/28/2020. On August 5th, 2020, description of project RV Carport. Rob Cowman, Street Commissioner, Building Inspector, on 8/17/2020, did not approve the project citing noncompliance with Walton Hills Codified Ordinance 1266 point oh four F1B. The village of Walton Hills received a hearing application dated 8/20/20 to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Decision being appealed, RV Carport. Notification of the Wednesday, September 30th, 2020 at 6:00 PM, hearing via YouTube was mailed to 13 residents interested parties. Due to the COVID-19 stay-at-home order, this hearing will be on YouTube. On-site inspections conducted by Mr. Owens, who has retired. Ms. Workman on 9/14/2020, Mr. Rich on 8/26/2020, Mr. Pollak on 9/18/2020, Mr. Johansson on 9/17/2020.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Mr. Pollak, would you please read the ordinance that we are hearing this appeal for?
It is 126604, which establishes dwelling setback requirements. Specifically, 126604 F1B states, "When the rear lot line of a corner lot coincides with the side lot line of an interior lot, the corner side setback shall comply with the requirements for a front setback, including subsection B above for front setback dimensions on buildup blocks." So, 126604 E1 establishes a minimum front setback in the R1 County Home District as 70 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Persons wishing to testify, identify themselves before addressing our board, each person will speak once and wait until the other remarks have been heard, and the floor will be open for additional remarks. And Ms. Workman will swear you in once you're signed in.
Do you swallingly swear or affirm the testimony given or statements made at this hearing are to the best of your knowledge, truthful, and factual, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Workman. Mr. Hanks?
Yes, sir.
Would you please state your reasons wanting this variance?
Excuse me?
Yes, excuse me.
Oh, you gave me the wrong one.
Sorry.
Here you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We want to ask Mr. Hanks why he wants the variance?
Because I'd like to put the carport along the side of the garage, keep everything pretty much contained, instead of having it all over the property. Our other problem is the height of Walton Road going across the sidewalk, if we had to use the side yard or anything. The telephone lines are low, not high enough to pull a camper if you had to install a driveway over there. I mean, we already have a pad port. We have electric to plug the camper in on that side of the garage where we're asking for the carport. I'm willing to landscape around it, whatever we need. I've never, I've always taken care of my property. I wouldn't want to do anything that was going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. I've lived there all my life. Since 1965, my parents bought that house. And alls I've done is add to it and fix it up since I took over ownership. And your permit has nothing about carports on there. So, I was told to mark accessory build. Then when you look up carports, it says it's not considered an accessory building because it's not enclosed to the ground. So, it's like a catch-22. So, I was told to mark accessory building, and I don't know, when a couple of you stopped over to look at the property, they wanted to know where the building was going up. And I'm like, well, it's not really a building because it's not enclosed. And then on the building permits requirements, on your paperwork from the village, there's nothing about carports on it. So, I'm not sure what direction we could go to make this work. I'd appreciate any help.
Well, I know we refer to another ordinance, and I know Mr. Pollak has it handy, and it clearly states qualifications for something like what you're trying to do. I'll let Mr. Pollak read it.
Mr. Hanks, we have two codified ordinances in the village. The first was passed on 9/3/96, and it is 660 point 17, parking or storage of recreational vehicles on private property. A, no person shall park a boat, trailer, mobile home, camper, or other recreational vehicle on any residential premise in the village closer than 70 feet from a public right-of-way. B, no person shall tie in or connect any public utility, including gas, electric, water, or sewer service, with any boat, trailer, mobile home, camper, or other recreational vehicle parked or stored on any residential premise in the village. C, no person shall park or store a boat, trailer, mobile home, camper, or other recreational vehicle on any residential premise in the village if such boat, trailer, mobile home, camper, or other recreational vehicle is not registered and licensed in the name of the owner or leasing of such premises. D, whoever violates this section is guilty of a minor misdemeanor.
Mr. Pollak, thank you. The reason why we're bringing this up is because Mr. Pollak found it in our zoning code. And number two, I mean, the village has been sending out letters to residents every year with residents that have been parking vehicles like RVs and boats in their front yard, asking them to remove them by such and such a date. You're in a precarious situation because you're on a corner lot, and you have two front lots. And that's, you know, that's precarious part of this whole situation. And then when we look down the street up Jefferson, and this really has no bearing on anything, but all of the other homes up Jefferson are 100, 120 feet frontage, and they're off to right-of-way by a long ways. And, you know, where you stand right now, you would be encroaching that right-of-way by, you know, probably a lot, 40 feet, maybe 50 feet, you know, when you have that set up. So, that would be a very large request. But, I mean, we're hearing an accessory building right now. And is there any other questions from the board before I ask Mr. Montello a question? Wayne or Billy or?
I just, I have just a couple definitions that came out of our codified ordinance book. They talk about an accessory building is, accessory building is a building on the same lot with and of a nature customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building. Definition of a building, any structure having one or more floors and a roof. Okay? So, it says supported by columns or walls, which is completely enclosed, and is designed or intended for the shelter or protection of persons, animals, or property. So, definitely a carport is not a building.
Correct.
Carport, a roofed structure with a foundation that provides space for the parking of vehicles and enclosed, or not more than three sides, okay? Definition of a structure, anything built or erected. And it goes on, clarifies a whole bunch of stuff, okay?
And plus, this is considered movable.
Well, when I talked to you, you indicated that you were going to have it secured to that pad, correct?
Not to the pad, to the ground. They're going to use mobile home anchors.
Well, they got to go into the concrete, right?
No.
But still, it's going to be fixed to something.
Well, it's going to be anchored because it has a wind rating. It has a snow load rating. I mean, you just don't want to put a piece of garbage and have it blow apart.
I understand.
I mean, that'd be crazy.
So, Mr. Montello, we're hearing an accessory building appeal, and Mr. Hanks is putting a request to have a carport. And I know possibly what the outcome could possibly be if we voted on an accessory building. Do we amend the appeal and focus on the carport? Do we put a, do we do a continuance? Do we have Mr., the Building Department, Building Inspector, come back with another, some more feedback?
What's the, what are you thinking, a practical difficulty? What would you amend it to, if you amended it?
Well, we would focus on 660 because that's the carport ordinance, as opposed to 1266 oh four.
That's the more applicable ordinance, and just amend the application. And I don't see what, I believe you've researched it, and are prepared to move forward. It doesn't make any sense to delay it, in my opinion. So, I would, it's up to him to amend his application, but I don't think you would have a problem if that's what you're suggesting to do.
So, as you know, we're looking at an ordinance that is 1266, is what the appeal is being heard.
Okay.
And that is, 1266 is not the most applicable ordinance that we should be hearing. We should be hearing the 660, which is the carport ordinance, as opposed to the accessory building.
Correct.
So, if you would allow us to amend the ordinance, we would take a vote on amending the ordinance and focusing on the carport ordinance.
Well, that's probably what we should be doing.
So, the motion would be to amend the ordinance 1266 for this hearing, and?
To add additional requests for a variance to 60 point 17, allowing the parking of a camper closer than 70 feet from a public right-of-way. Again, would that be acceptable to you?
I think, Mr. Rich, probably the proper thing would be for the applicant to amend his application, so that instead of us applying the original statute that we were going to look at, that it would be an amended application for a variance pursuant to ordinance 660 point 17.
Okay.
For the parking and storage. Is that what you're, it looks like the proper would be that you would amend your request for the variance, instead of the variance being for the accessory building, the variance would be for the application of variance for, to?
Carport.
The carport, yes.
Correct.
And is that what you would like to do, is amend your application for the variance pursuant to the carport statute?
Yeah, I didn't want an accessory building. I was told to mark it accessory building by the village.
Okay.
And I started this last summer, which I told all these that came out. And then I went through the zoning person, then I went to the Building Inspector, and then finally application, and finally turned it over to you.
Yeah, I, we understand that you're not, it was good that we finally found this provision that would be more appropriate.
Right. And I don't know if you go by the Ohio Revised Code, but they also do not consider it a permanent structure, carport.
Okay. Just for clarification, 60, or 660 point 17 provides the parking or storage of a recreational vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
No closer than 70 feet.
No closer than 70 feet to the right-of-way of a.
So, it's either storing it there, not being in use, or parking it there. It has nothing to do with the carport. Carport is just something that he wants to cover over.
And protect it.
Protect it.
Mr. Chairman, we're both requesting the same variance whichever way you go, correct?
I'm sorry, what was your comment?
It's like we're, they're going to be requesting the same variance whichever way they go. It's still going to be the same variance, you know, 70 feet.
Yes, yes, yeah. See, I mean, keep in mind, we still have a 70-foot right-of-way variance on the front yard.
But you see how my house is set up, and there's no rear property to be able to do that. So, this kind of keeps everything contained and the buildings together, and hopefully the color matches the house and everything, and it's going to look uniform. You know, I'm trying to get it to blend in. I don't want to disturb the other part of the property. I mean, it would, that would affect the neighbors. I mean, this is already next to the house. I mean, it seems like the right way to go.
So, Mr. Montello, do we, or Ms. Workman, you brought this up, and?
I think we've got two issues here. We've got the issues of the parking and storage of the vehicle.
Yes.
And the parking and storage could be with or without a cover or a building. So, I think we really do have maybe two variances, or at least two ordinances. It seems like the parking and storage is not necessarily a building code issue. It might be a legal, it might be a misdemeanor, or in that, I'm not sure if you can.
Well, parking, parking a recreational vehicle or a boat in the front yard is, it's not allowed in the village.
It's a misdemeanor. So, I'm not sure how the Board of Zoning can grant a variance to complying with the statute.
So, what I was, what I was going to ask is, and I know that this is probably going to put Mr. Hanks in a bind because he has a lead time on a carport, but what we, what were you possibly suggesting that he, by amending his application, getting together with the Building Department after this meeting and working something out?
Well, and second, when you look at it again, on the second glance, I'm not sure if 66 point 17 is a building, a board of zoning issue.
Well, I thought part of it was, as long as you've had a current sticker on it, too.
That's one aspect of it.
Right.
But there's other things that it's got to be no closer than 70 foot from the right-of-way. That's the big issue right there.
Well, that's why I'm here for a variance.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you see the situation I have. And if you look towards the high-tension wires and stuff to go out there, that's part of the Tinkers Creek watershed. The signs are up there. So, what do you have to do, Army Corps Engineers, go through all that? I mean, that's insane. And you can't build underneath the high-tension wires and those structures. They made me move the pine trees back. So, my yard has shrunk on that side. So, to put a carport over there would just stick out like a sore thumb.
Is it, is it, I know your lot is very wide. It's 338 or 9 feet along Walton Road. Are you saying that it's not possible to comply with the 70-foot offset to the, along Walton Road?
Well, the height of Walton Road, the depth of the sidewalk.
Okay.
And there's Tinkers Creek watershed, and the telephone lines, how low they hang. To try and disturb the sidewalk, I'd have to lift all that. It just, I mean, that's why I asked you to look down there when you came over. I mean, if you stand on the sidewalk and see the height of the road, the road's like this.
Yeah, yeah. The road's pitched that way. So, my question would be to Mr. Montello, is it, is it something that we should have a roundtable discussion with Mr. Hanks and the Building Commission?
It wouldn't hurt anything, I suppose. I mean, there's some, you know, there is a complex issue or two here about being able to grant a variance on a criminal charge, you know, criminal ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
But I do understand, you know, the practical difficulties of the situation. So, perhaps maybe we could work something out.
I mean, I came down here to try to do it the right way, not be the weekend warrior, and just construct it, and then we worry about it on Monday. I tried to do it the right way, and now this is where I'm at.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to work it out. We're trying to help.
I appreciate it. Well, I appreciate it. I just want you to know that I tried to do the right way, go about it. I started last summer, so.
Mm-hmm. Any other comments?
I just have a couple of questions about the camper. Is it a new camper or an old camper?
Yes, 2020. 2020.
2020, okay.
And a payment book to go with it.
We all get those.
Nothing's free anywhere.
So you bought it new?
Yes, sir.
Have you ever considered just putting a cover over top of it?
I had two hips replaced and a knee repaired. Have you ever tried climbing up on a camper?
I really have, so I know what you're?
If you come over and help, maybe I would.
I know what you're, I know what you're saying, okay? But I just, I have to ask the question to?
Ah, no problem at all.
Okay.
What's the gauge, steel or aluminum of this?
I'm sorry?
What is the gauge of the steel or aluminum? Do you know?
I don't have that with me right now. I'm sorry.
And should it, or should it, or should it not have gutters on it? And, you know, for the water flow? You know, when it rains and pours and crazy, you know, I'm kind of like going off the deep end on that. But shouldn't they have like gutters?
No.
No?
I mean, it's all mulch beds around it. I mean, the, Cleveland Water's going to make you pay for the rainwater anyways. It's a hard surface.
That's true, yeah. And you had indicated that you were going to put vegetation around?
Yes, sir.
What, the side-facing Walton and Jefferson or?
Both.
Both?
I was probably going with Arbivitas.
And how high is the RV? How tall is it?
The RV is 11 foot.
11 foot?
Yeah.
Okay, so this would be about 20 feet high, this carport?
I think it's 14.
Okay, 14 feet?
I don't have the actual number right in front of me.
And did you say the delivery on something like this is 12 weeks?
Yes.
So we're already into January. Well, I, you know, I'm taking Mr. Montello's comment. I think we ought to have a meeting with Mr. Cowman. And have you present, obviously. We need to talk about this because it's the only way we can do this right now. And I try to get ahold of him tomorrow, so maybe we can meet as early as Friday or Monday and try to work something out. But we can't vote on the motion because that's really not, we want to, we want you to amend your appeal because the ordinance in question is not the right one.
Correct.
And that's how we'll frame it.
Well, we adjourn the meeting for what, another week or so, a week or two?
We could, yeah. So this, could I have a, I guess what we would do is we would put a motion out there to put this on hold for another time. If we could get together another week from maybe next Wednesday? Kind of hammer this out?
Will it be resolved in the interim, maybe perhaps?
So is there a motion that we could vote on?
I'd like to make a motion for a continuance to this hearing, if it's acceptable to Mr. Hanks.
That'd be fine.
I second the motion.
So Mr. Pollak has put a motion out there to vote on a continuance to next Wednesday, which is at the August, October 6?
It is October 7.
October 7? And it's seconded by Ms. Workman. Vote on the motion, Ms. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So what we would like to do is set the meeting for next Wednesday, October 7. And we'll use 6:00 PM. If we got to make it 7:00 PM because of work schedules, we could do that. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Oh, Mr. Rich, I'm sorry to interrupt. I will be out of town that day, I forgot.
Okay.
So if you want to do it earlier in the week, I would be available.
Okay. Earlier would be, can we do it Monday? Or, well, Tuesday's a council meeting, I would assume.
I'm not 100% sure of that, whether we're having a council meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
I'm having surgery on Monday.
And that's having surgery on Monday. How about Thursday?
Thursday sounds good.
I'll be out until Tuesday, the following Tuesday.
Okay.
It's a Columbus Day, so.
Yeah, it is Columbus Day.
Yeah, so we have a vacation cabin reserved.
Columbus Day is Monday next week, right?
A week from Monday.
Week from Monday? Would we, want to shoot for Monday?
I should be all right.
Would you shoot for Monday?
Monday would be fine.
Shoot for Monday? Back to August, October 6 then, right?
That's Tuesday, but I do have a council meeting in Bedford on Monday at 6. I don't know if you'll leave me or not, but I'd be there.
Well, if you have another commitment, I think we could still hammer this through as long as, as long as we have, you know, Jeff or Rob available. We communicate with them before this meeting as a group or I'll forward the information to everybody, those who can't make it, so we can have a good meeting for you, one way or the other. Okay?
So we're doing it on Monday?
We're going to, we're going to set the meeting up for Monday.
6.
The 6.
I mean, 6 o'clock.
At 6 o'clock.
And that's October the 5th, right?
That's the 5th.
Still doing a prior meeting with the Building Inspector, prior to that meeting?
Yeah, even if it's earlier in the day, or I'd like to get it done by Friday.
Whatever you set up would be fine.
Okay. I'd like to get it done by Friday so we can have it all set up accordingly.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Adjourned?
Have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second emotion.
Second? Vote on the motion, Mr. Johansson?
Yes.
Mr. Pollak?
Yes.
Ms. Workman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Time is 6:36. Thank you, Mr. Hanks, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.